Good evening. It's Wednesday, June 4th, and I'd like to welcome you to the meeting of the South Brunswick Board of Education and call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We didn't get there yet.
You didn't get there yet?
I gotta do the statement of advance notice.
Do the statement.
I'd like to read the statement of advance notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10-4-6, also known as the Sunshine Act, was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting the interests is discussed or acted upon. The primary purpose is for board members to discuss and vote on board business. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the board secretary has caused notice to this meeting 48 hours prior, including date, time, and location, to be posted in the South Brunswick Public Library and Board Office, filed with the township clerk, and communicated to the home news and the Star Ledger. It is also posted on the district website. Roll call, Mr. Fetter.
Ms. Julie Ferrara?
Present.
Ms. Alicia Khan?
Here.
Rajakrishna?
Yes.
Smita Raj?
Yep.
Mike Mitchell is absent. Lisa Rogers?
Here.
Rajesh absent. Deepa?
Yes.
And President Laura Hernandez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. I now need approval of the meeting agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's meeting agenda? Motion? Lisa and Smita. All in favor? Aye. Now, I make a motion to move to executive session. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of South Brunswick hereby moves into executive session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10-4-21, to discuss the following legal matters. Be it further resolved that the discussion conducted in executive session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved. Further action may be taken at any meeting. Please note that the Board will be in executive session for approximately 90 minutes. Can I have a motion to move? Lisa and Alicia. So, let me move to executive session. Okay, can I get a motion to reconvene to public session? Lisa and Rajah. So, before we move on to the public comments section, I would like to read a statement on behalf of the Board of Education. The South Brunswick Board of Education holds itself to the highest standards of integrity, professionalism, and transparency. Our primary responsibility is to ensure the success, safety, and well-being of all students while maintaining the trust of the community we serve. In this spirit, that we address a recent series of social media posts made by an individual board member. While these posts were made on her personal account and solely reflect the views of the individual and not the Board, it has nonetheless generated understandable concern. We extend our sincere apologies to any students, families, staff members, or community stakeholders who were offended or disheartened by this post. Please note that Ms. Karthik has issued a written apology. The comments made by Ms. Karthik on her personal Facebook page regarding halal meat were made in her capacity as an individual and do not represent the position or opinion of the Board or the South Brunswick School District in any way. While we have repeated our position that this comment is not a board matter, we are fully aware that many members of the public are very concerned by these comments, which have caused discord in our community. Please be assured that during meetings that have already taken place with community members, we have listened, heard, and processed these concerns with an eye toward determining whether and how they can be addressed by the Board. Between our last meeting and tonight, we had have numerous meetings with community members on this topic. Also, please be assured that the Board is committed to an inclusive and supportive environment for all. As we remain focused on board business before the Board, please be aware that during the public portion of this meeting, we will be limiting comments about this issue to one hour. We are hopeful that our community can move forward from this experience and that the Board is allowed to go about board business. Tonight, the Board discussed in depth the issue at hand. We believe that it is important to be transparent on the Board's position. We have found that Ms. Deepa Karthik did in fact violate policy 0169.02, Board Member Use of Social Networks with her social media posts. This policy is easily accessible on the district website. First, it is important that we share and help the community understand the role of the Board when addressing an elected board member's actions. Boards of educations do not have any authority to remove an elected member from their elected seat. We also believe it is not for the Board to make such a request. Members are elected by the community and not chosen by the Board. Boards of educations do not have the authority to remove an elected member from their position of president or vice president once they are elected. Boards cannot force a fellow member to adhere to certain actions, such as mandatory training, other than something that is state mandated. What Boards can do if they determine that a policy has been violated? One, Boards can publicly state their dissatisfaction with another board member for violating policy, ethics, or for any other behavior that disrupts the Board and/or school district. Boards can request things of members even though the member has the ultimate choice to adhere to said request or not. The Board President has the sole authority to assign and/or remove members from Board Committees. The Board can make a public statement regarding a fellow member's actions. As stated, as stated, this matter was reviewed thoroughly this evening, and we want to be transparent on the outcomes and the Board's response to the violation of Policy 0169.02. As president, I have removed Ms. Karthik from her current Board Committees of Education and Policy. I want to reiterate that we do not condone what has transpired and want all to know that these types of actions are not accepted by this governing body. We also know the importance of the Board staying on track and doing the work of the Board for our students in our community. This is our plan moving forward with a wonderful evening planned for June 19th as we honor our retirees. Ms. Karthik.
Thank you to all the community members who've come out here today and to the ones who are watching online. My first statement for the day is, for this evening, is a response that I had provided to a gentleman, Mr. Ali Azar, who had written to me about my specific social media post, which I think most are aware here, and also to Mr. Arif Patel, who was subsequently looped into that conversation, who was the president of IS CJ. I wanted to make this statement so that everybody's aware of my response that I had provided. This response was, I received the first email from Mr. Azar on Wednesday, May 21st, and on Thursday, May 22nd, was when there was a group here that had come and expressed their emotions to me. And on May 23rd, I had provided the response to Mr. Azar and Mr. Patel. So, in my response, I written, Dear Mr. Azar and Mr. Patel, post the Board meeting yesterday, I had the opportunity to reflect on emotions that were expressed. I'm deeply saddened and hurt that my thoughts were misunderstood. The comment on my personal Facebook page about halal food was my understanding that it's a specific method of slaughter to restrict contamination, one which I missed expressing thoroughly, that led to this misunderstanding and confusion. What I meant to convey was that the method of slaughter is to restrict contamination per halal, not that the halal food was contaminated in any way. I regret that my comment was not clear and the hurt it caused, for which I apologize. My comment came from my deeply held Hindu belief of non-violence and non-consumption of halal products. I traced the connection to non-animal products, such as rice, tea, coffee, and the halal label of these products. I understand that my comment may have come across negatively. It was never my intention to insult Islamic religious beliefs and practices. I have always strived to work in the best interest of all the communities within South Brunswick and will continue to do so. Thank you for your understanding. Regards. So, this was the email that I'd sent. I also, today, I want to address my, the larger South Brunswick community who has elected me to this, to this position and which I have served for close to four years now. To my South Brunswick community, since May 22nd, 2025, my life has been in a turmoil, perpetuated by a concerted smear campaign using my personal opinions on my personal social media page, which were used to attack my deeply held religious dietary practices and an attack on my freedom of expression. This was triggered by a person who has a history of attacking another South Brunswick Board Member, who too had expressed her personal views. I wasn't afforded even 48 hours to respond to the email that I received on this subject. Instead, there was an attempt to defame, demonize, and vilify me by the same person on our South Brunswick Facebook community page. I was called a xenophobe, an Islamophobe, a shameless, disgusting human being, all because I missed fully explaining the mention of one word. Immediately the next day, on Friday, May 23rd, in my letter to the person, I took full accountability for missing to fully express myself. I also expressed my deep regret at the unintended hurt my social media post had caused the community and offered my heartfelt apologies for the same. However, to my horror, on the next working day, there was a targeted attack by a group of people who demanded adverse action from my employer. Apparently, there were multiple emails to my HR department seeking to harm me professionally. This intimidation and harassment has taken an immense psychological toll on me personally and my family. Especially, my children have been deeply affected by these acts. In my four years as a member of the South Brunswick Board of Education, my conduct and my focus, including my voting record, has been unbiased and viewed through the singular lens of what is right for our children. In the BOE meeting of February 27, 2025, there was a vote to include Christmas holiday on the calendar. There was a huge debate on this topic, and I was one of the only five members who voted in favor of the inclusion of Christmas in the holiday calendar. This is a very recent incident, which is a testament to my religious tolerance and inclusiveness. Recently, we were informed that halal will be made available in the cafeteria. I welcome this inclusive move to support all those who require this dietary accommodation, and my colleagues on this Board can attest to the same. This is again a testament to my cultural and religious inclusivity. Going back years as a person of Hindu faith, educated in a Christian parochial school, who grew up in a community which was predominantly Muslim, I have a fair understanding of pluralism and continue to cherish and have a warm relationship with many friends from various faiths, including the Muslim community. It has always been my endeavor to work towards fairness, equal opportunities, and space for members of all faiths and all groups. My actions have been guided by my personal value system of fair-mindedness, compassion, and acceptance of differing views. I want to thank the countless messages of support I have received from the Hindu, Jain, Bodh, Sikh, and Muslim community members. My presence here today is proof that I deeply cherish the importance of civil discourse and dialogue and the value of freedom, justice, and pursuit of happiness that our great country was built on. On that note, I hope we can all put this behind us and move towards greater understanding, love, and acceptance of each other. May God bless America.
Okay, with that, whoa, 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 we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep order to this, guys. So, with that being said, with that being said, we're gonna move on to public comments, but I ask that you be respectful of people that come up here. My views on this is that disrespect is not allowed. We just don't allow that. Each member will have three minutes to talk, and we won't exceed the hour timeframe here. If we, if you're excited, and you know, I don't wanna stop you from any of that, but just know that takes away from your time from talking. So, what we're gonna do, there is a sign-in sheet over there, correct? Okay, there is a sign-in sheet, okay. Yeah, so we're gonna have that. We haven't gotten there yet. I gotta read my statement. I'm gonna get you guys up there. I just wanna make sure that there's a sign-in sheet whenever you go up there, okay? So, did Dave send you those? Did Dave send you the registered names?
I only have one person registered.
Okay, okay. So, let me read my, my comment, and then we'll start, we'll start public comment. To his public comments, the Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Complete copies of Policy 0167, which governs this portion of the meeting, are available to the public at the auditorium entrance, online, or by contacting the Board Office. To permit the fair and orderly expression of comments, we ask that the participants be recognized by the presiding officer and preface comments by announcing his or her name, place of residence, group affiliation if appropriate, and by completing the sign-in sheet. That's what I was referring to. Please print legibly, or we may not be able to document your name for the permanent records. Each statement made by the participant shall be limited to three minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Mr. Fetter will indicate when you have 15 seconds remaining. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participants may address or question board members. No discussion between a participant or respondent shall exceed the three-minute limit with a total time limit of one hour. It is our plan to listen to as many members of the public within the hour timeframe. Once all questions and comments from all members of the public are made, the Board of Education may respond or respond via email in the most timely and efficient matter available. All questions and comments made will be noted. Mr. Fetter, do we have anybody preregistered?
We have Haman Pandya.
Yes.
Okay, you can.
Up to the mic.
You can come up to my.
Hi, my name is Haman Pandya, and I live in Edison. So, I'm here to support Deepa Karthikji and completely object removing her from any committee as Board did not give any reasonable account on how her social media post is against a community or against Board's policy. Secondly, it said that BOE is now supporting and listening to those who does not believe in the Constitution of USA, which is the United States of America. The Constitution of USA is above all, above all religion, right? And the same Constitution gives us everyone sitting here a fundamental right to speech, to expression, and to religion. I'm surprised how the Board is, you know, taking up this matter and even discussing this. Isn't it itself? Yeah. I mean, like, the Board of Education is discussing this, which is itself challenging to First Amendment. Can education of Board do that? Lastly, her social media post is her personal view and is protected under the First Amendment. Also, we are not living in a country which is governed by Sharia law. Where, yeah. Yeah. We are not living in a country which is governed by Sharia law, where you can't speak or share your views against or for something. So, Karthikji, we all are with you. Thank you.
Can you please sign in? Can you sign the paper? Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Comments? That was all, that was all.
Did someone, someone submit their name to register?
Yes, I did as well.
Do me a favor. Go up to the, go up and stand in line over there.
Yeah. Yeah, if you say your name, if you sent your name, go ahead.
My name is Desikan Narasimhan. I'm a resident of South Brunswick. I live on 27 Rank Farm Drive, Monmouth Junction. Dear members of the Board, I'm here today to express my deep concern about the campaign of public harassment directed at Mrs. Deepa Karthik during the 22nd of May Board of Education meeting and events following that. Her original social media post, though it used an unfortunate phrase, was not written with malice. She later clarified her intent in a letter to the South Brunswick Mosque, stating that her words were meant to describe halal as a religiously guided method to avoid contamination, not to insult or target any faith. However, rather than gracefully accepting this clarification in the spirit it was offered, some individuals escalated matters and turned this into a witch hunt. Her employer was contacted. Hateful messages were sent. Her family was targeted, and even Hinduism was disparaged. These aren't the actions of those seeking dialogue. They are tools of coercion and fear. It went further. Students were urged, I understand this morning, to sign petitions over past comments about Malala Yusufzai, completely unrelated to this incident. Meanwhile, at the last meeting, I was stunned to hear speakers use aggressive, intimidating, patronizing, and even misogynistic language without intervention from the Board. Not even two minutes were offered to Mrs. Karthik to clarify her social media post in a setting meant for public discourse. This could have obviated the need of countless hours we have spent today. This is not activism. It is a targeted campaign to silence dissent and dissuade Hindu Americans from public service through a campaign of fear and intimidation. We should not stand for this. Mrs. Karthik's right to free speech is enshrined in the First Amendment as noted by the previous speaker. But I'm going to quote the biographer of Voltaire, Evelyn Beatrice Hall, who wrote, "I disapprove of what you say, but I will defend to the death your right to say it." That's the hallmark of a true and mature democracy. I'm surprised that the Board members that came to a conclusion to remove Deepa Karthik from her, from these committees has not shown this maturity this evening. I've lived in South Brunswick for over 20 years. I've known Mrs. Karthik to be a fair, qualified, deeply committed to all students. She deserves a safe space to serve. The Board must protect civil discourse, not let it be hijacked by intimidation. Finally, we expect our public schools to remain secular in character, not guided by the demands of any one religion.
You have 15 seconds? You have 15 seconds.
If religious accommodations are turned into mandatory requirements, then we must ask ourselves whether public schools are the appropriate space for such demands. The goal should be a school environment that is inclusive and neutral, free from any religious overtones, special preferences, or pressures. Those are the secular credentials upon which our constitution is based. Thank you and have a good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I won't state my name or my address for personal reasons, but I am a senior at South Brunswick High School. And tonight, I rise not with anger, but with deep concern. Concern for truth, concern for tolerance, and for the future that we are building for students like me. Ms. Kartik, a board member, shared her personal views on social media as a citizen, a mother, and yes, a proud Hindu. She raised honest... She raised honest, rational questions. Why are we seeing halal certifications on tea, shampoo, even toothpaste? These aren't food items, yet companies submit to halal authorities, creating a religious certification system that consumers unknowingly pay for. Let's call it what it is, a financial structure rooted in one religion affecting people of all others, Hindu, Christian, Sikh, Jews. We all have the right to ask, why are our dollars funding a faith that we don't belong to? That's not Islamophobia. That's economic self-awareness. She also mentioned Malala Yusufzai. While her personal story is inspiring, it is fair and necessary to ask, why is Malala completely silent on atrocities against Hindus, Sikhs, and apostates, especially when committed in the name... Especially when committed in the name of the very ideology that she targeted. Silence from such figures is not neutral. It's political, ladies and gentlemen. And for this, for raising thoughtful, peaceful, non-violent questions, she's being hounded. Last board meeting, people ambushed her with calls to resign. This week, a petition is circulating in our high school. Flyers being passed around, students being dragged into an adult campaign of character assassination. And that's when it stopped being political. It became personal. Because I know Ms. Kartik's daughter. She's a sweet, bright little girl who walks the same hallways that I do. Has anyone given any thought about what she will endure when her mother's face is stapled to resignation petitions in the same building that she learns in? Are we building an inclusive school, or are we telling our children, if your parent holds an unpopular opinion, your life becomes collateral damage? This is cancel culture. It's mob pressure. And most dangerously, it is the silencing of a Hindu woman who dared to question dominant narratives. So I stand with Ms. Kartik today. I stand with her daughter, and I stand with every Hindu who has quietly accepted this double standard.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you and God bless America.
Can you go? Yeah, my name is Satya Duspati. I'm a community activist working for many community causes. I also happen to fight for my First Amendment rights when I was sued with multiple multimillion-dollar lawsuits. Once 100 million and another time 20 million dollars, and one in both cases. I'm here to support Board of Education member Deepak Kartik on her First Amendment right to express herself without any fear of retribution. Not only that, I happen to be in complete agreement with what she expressed. Any cursory investigation says halal is a religious slaughter, and more so in its current form in US, it is banned in several European nations for the violence involved to the animal. Each religious follower choose what they believe in, but its imposition covertly or overtly on another community is unfair, just as you would Jewish community impose kosher food or a Hindu community impose vegetarian food. Extending halal to other foods, like she said, is being debated widely because it has nothing to do with slaughter and it forces to employ community members. This is unfair and it involves economic terrorism on other communities. It is bizarre you're holding this meeting, most likely consuming precious taxpayer dollars. Take example of political polarization in this country. Would you hold this meeting if a board member expressed pro or against President Trump? And some members are offended? I urge you to check every word board member Deepak expressed and cross verify and it is true. And even if it is her opinion, it is protected speech and not against any religion or community. It's better serves our children when they know the truth so they can make proper choices. If you deference someone, then they have to grow up and not intimidate or waste taxpayer dollars. So also, targeting anyone's position for simply expressing her free speech is violation of First Amendment right. As somebody who fought those cases in very high-profile cases, I respectfully tell to the board, anything you do to Deepak Kartik, you are most likely violating her First Amendment right. Thank you.
Before you start, I do have a list, and all of you did not submit a letter, correct? I'm gonna call the people first to get in front of the line, okay? So we have Pradeep. Are you there, Pradeep Sheth? Okay. It doesn't work that way, but if you want to speak, you may go up and speak. If not, that's okay, but you can go to the front. We have, after Pradeep, can we please have Sandeep? Thank you. Can we then have... Just let me finish. Hold on. Sorry about that. Just one second. You're not losing any time. Don't worry. Jai Banseal? Okay, thank you. Atul? Thank you. Oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Someone raised their hand. I was excited we got it. I'll get back to Atul in a second, but we have Supriya Bimasan? Yeah? And then Atul, we had Atul Badhigar? Okay? And then we have Hiten Shah? Thank you. And then our last one that we have registered is Baba Sahib Kail? Okay, then stay right there. You'll be fine. You'll be all right. Okay? All right, thank you.
Please don't forget to sign in on the sheet, okay?
Yeah, I've already signed in the signing sheet.
Great, thank you.
So my name is Pradeep Sheth, spelled as P-R-A-D-I-P, last name is Sheth, S-H-E-T-H. I'm here to support her, and I have a very short questions. So if a Jewish student is saying that he only eats kosher food, would he be asked to... Would he be questioned? If a Muslim student says he can only eat halal food, would he be questioned? Then why is she questioned if she's saying that she doesn't eat the halal food? Why is there even a question to ask? Secondly, as everyone else has said, that First Amendment rights are given, it's written in the Constitution, and isn't by questioning this, aren't we violating those rights? So these are fundamental questions. I'm surprised why is this even an issue when all the board members, I'm sure they are aware of the constitutional rights of the individuals and the rights of... If the Jewish, again, the Jewish student says he only eats kosher food, would he be questioned? Would this even come up as an issue? So I'm shocked and surprised that this has even come up. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sandeep Somani. I'm a resident of South Brunswick for last 10 years, and I'm here to support Ms. Deepak Kartik. I agree with all the things that have been said by the previous speakers. I'd also emailed the board earlier. So I just want to raise just a couple of points. I watched the recording of the last school board meeting, and it was outright intimidation and bullying of a sitting board member in front of the board at a board. This is how the board is reacting. How is this an issue, and why are we wasting taxpayers' money on this thing? The post, personal post by Ms. Deepak Kartik, whatever the subject that was, is it a subject for the school board to discuss? Is the school board, is it in the purview of the school board to evaluate what dietary practices different faith groups should have? And was Ms. Deepak Kartik asking for changes which were being in the school meal plans which were being questioned here? I don't think so. That was not raised in any of the comments last time. Was she asking for a change in the curriculum? Was she asking for teaching anything about Yusuf Malala in the curriculum? I don't think so. That was not the issue. And is it the matter, is it the purview, isn't in the purview of the board, to decide whether who should be getting a Nobel Prize or not? I had heard of judicial overreach. This is school board overreach. I mean, it really calls into question the wisdom of this board. And I would think that the board has much more important things to do than waste time on this. So, and Ms. Deepak Kartik is my neighbor. I deeply respect her, and I value her contributions to the school board, and I am very disappointed in the way she is being treated over here. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jay Banseal, and I live in Warren. I stand here in front of you today as a executive, member of the Executive Board of World Hindu Council of America, a nonprofit organization that's been serving the US community for last 55 years. More importantly, I speak as a voice for fairness and basic human dignity. I want to speak about Ms. Deepak Kartik, a respected member of our community, an elected official, a mother, and a proud American citizen. Deepak shared her personal views on her social media account. That is her constitutional right. However, what followed was deeply troubling and frankly unacceptable. She was hauled in front of the Board of Education, surrounded by a hostile, angry mob. She was shouted at, glared at, and even poked by people who came not to dialogue, not to have dialogue, but to intimidate. This was not a community conversation. This was mob behavior, and we strongly condemn it. We also strongly condemn the Board of Education for allowing this to take place in their presence. Their silence and inaction sent a dangerous message, that bullying is tolerated and intimidation is acceptable. Let's be clear. This kind of despicable behavior and lack of respect for women might be acceptable, might be a norm in certain communities and certain societies, but this is America. Here, we expect civility. We expect to, we can disagree, even when we vehemently disagree, we do not try to silence them through fear and aggression. So tonight, I stand for Deepak Kartik because she is an American citizen exercising her right to speak freely, and what happened to her was wrong, plain and simple. This is a wake-up call for all of us. If we allow mob to dictate who gets to speak...
You have 15 seconds.
And who must be shamed for into silence, we are not protecting our democracy. We are betraying it. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to stop you guys just for one minute. I'm gonna let you all speak. But I just want to clarify something. What action the board took was on our policy. That's not the First Amendment acting. So what we took action on was that, please read the policy. That's what we did. It was that we looked at what it said, we evaluated it said, Ms. Kartik was in there with us. So I just wanted to explain that we understand First Amendment rights, absolutely. No, 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 no. You gotta let me speak. You gotta let me speak, guys. So I just, I just want to let, no, because you guys are saying that we... No, it is your turn, and I'm gonna allow you to speak. I just wanted...
Lisa, 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 look at your card, look at your note.
Okay, guys, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take my three minutes. I'm gonna take my three minutes.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm gonna talk about a frog, I'm gonna talk about Chinese food, and I'm gonna talk about hate speech. So if you've put a frog in warm water or hot water, it'll jump out. But if you increase the temperature slowly, it gets cooked before it realizes. Right? The analogy here is, so it is with individual liberties. When you take them away slowly, like we see happening today, before you know, you're fighting a completely different battle against completely different enemies. Thankfully, United States Constitution has given us the right to express ourselves openly, freely, even if it bothers somebody. Some folks, last time I was here, said that, no, 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 but hate speech, we can't have hate speech. Guys, we can't have anything that is illegal. Hate speech is not illegal. The entire room to right now, this moment, can stand up and tell me to my face, I hate you, I hate your religion, I hate the country you come from, I hate your language, I hate your suit, I hate your tie you're not wearing. Still, none of that is illegal. So there is a framework in this country called the law that allows for what can be said and what cannot be said. And if something or somebody or some policies is overriding it, it is incorrect. So that is my little thing about hate speech. Finally, let's say I make a post today about Chinese food is the most horrid thing on earth. It makes you sick. Everybody who will eat Chinese food is gonna get sick and diseased, and I put it on my Facebook. What are the chances of every Chinese restaurant owner showing up and harassing me like these people did to Deepak? What are the chances? Can I tell you? The chances are zero because they won't care. You know why? Because they will say, it's your opinion. I'm gonna still make my Chinese food, sell my Chinese food. There are millions of people who are buying it. If every Chinese restaurant owner showed up, you had to realize that this was the object of them coming was not the Chinese food comment. There had to be something else.
15 seconds.
And, you know, I'm 50 years old, right? So I've often wondered, I grew up in India, what would I have done if I was in the fight of India's independence?
Thank you for your comment.
You know, there are proof points.
So if you continue, other people won't get a chance to talk as we're still gonna close it. So I'm asking to everyone, thank you.
All right, my name is Atul Badhigar. I'm a resident of South Brunswick. My kids go to middle school and the high school. And obviously, I'm here to support Deepak Kartik. So I'm not going to repeat what has been already said more eloquently than what I could say about free speech, intimidation, bullying, everything. I'm here to just narrate one incident. Actually, it's a very small incident. And, you know, coincidentally, it's on the lines of what Atul said before me, so I can say two Atuls thing alike. Okay, so this incident is basically a coworker, Caucasian lady who worked with me. She had pet dogs, and we were just talking about pets, and she just made a very casual remark about, you know, how could some people eat dogs? Okay? And that was just a comment, okay? It was just a comment because I can understand where she's coming from. She has pet dogs, so she's, you know, she just made a comment about how can some people... I'm not going to take it as sinophobia or, you know, hate speech or anything like that. People nowadays just get uptight about anything, any, you know, comment that is made on social media. I am really surprised that the board even took up this issue for discussion. This is, I don't know, I have not read the policy. I will read the policy, but like previous speakers have spoken before me, this should not even be a policy. You know, picking individual comments from social media, personal comments from social media, and then taking, you know, out of context and, you know, wasting taxpayers' dollars to have a meeting to discuss that, and I definitely do not support the board's position on this. And to that, I'm just going to say, you know, the board has set a very wrong precedent. Shame on the board. Really, really. It's very shameful, you know, that you guys, some of you guys, whoever voted for this action to be taken, extremely shameful. Yeah, and that's all, you know, I really want to say. And once, just a PS note about Mr. Federer.
You have 15 seconds.
Yeah, that's enough for me. PS note about Mr. Federer, you know, enjoy your retirement, and, you know, we'll definitely not miss your voice. Jai Sri Ram.
Good evening, board members and community, and Mr. Federer. My name is Shri Priya, and yeah, I'm going to repeat the freedom of speech and the... Yes, I am going to repeat it and stress. I'm here to support Deepak. I'm speaking tonight to defend the constitutional rights we all share, freedom of speech and religion. Board member Deepak Kartik expressed her beliefs as a devout Hindu and vegetarian. Her comments were personal, sincere, and protected by the First Amendment. I'm sorry, I'm repeating it again. They were not attacks on anyone. Yet, instead of encouraging dialogue, we have seen coordinated efforts to silence her, including calls for her resignation. At the last meeting, outsiders created a hostile environment that shut down real conversation. This group is wasting the board's time with outrage and distraction when we should be focused on students. There also appears to be a double standard in how board members are treated. Ms. Karthik deserves the same respect and freedom as anyone else. Suppressing her voice with communal rhetoric is dangerous. Free speech and religious liberty belongs to everyone, not just those with popular opinions. Let's get back to true dialogue, support diverse viewpoints, and put students first. Thank you.
Sure.
0169 dot 02.
And can you tell me, when was the policy made and who has the decision to make because those policies, how long it is existing?
We're gonna start the public comment, we have to keep moving. You can do that, that'd be fine.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ashwini Rai Bhai, and I am a resident of South Brunswick. And some of you might have actually seen me a couple of weeks ago at a similar Board of Education meeting. Needless to say, I'm here basically because I want to acknowledge and support Deepak Karthik, who recently spoke sincerely as a devout Hindu and a vegetarian. Her perspective rooted in her faith is exactly the kind of expression that the First Amendment protects. For any of us who actually follow the faith, animal slaughter is deeply distressing and violates our core beliefs. Importantly, Ms. Karthik's words were not an attack on others but an honest expression of her own values. Unfortunately, in the past two weeks, instead of thoughtful and meaningful dialogue, what we have seen are coordinated efforts to hurl abuse at Ms. Karthik and silence her voice. At the last Board of Education meeting, individuals came in to inflame tensions and intimidate, creating an extremely hostile environment. While I respect that the Board of Education, the honored member, called out today that for need for us to be respectful, I did not see any such attempt at the last meeting where she was subjected to name-calling and abuse. There is also another troubling pattern. The individual behind this outrage who started all of this has targeted board members before, but the same gentleman, this other board member, did not get subjugated to the same harassment or scrutiny. What warrants these double standards? Ms. Karthik has every right to express not only her religious and dietary beliefs, including her comments on Malala Yousafzai as a person. Seeing such comments as an attack on a particular religion and then using that to wipe up communal rhetoric, intimidate, and insult others goes against the First Amendment rights. And while I appreciate the board actually clarifying just before this, that the decisions made today were not on the basis of the First Amendment violations, pretty much everything that I've seen from the last time around to this time and the decisions that were made with regards to her positions, pretty much actually violates all of those things that we've seen, the principles.
Good evening, my name is Gaurav Tiwari, and I'm a resident of South Brunswick. I've lived here for fifteen years, and today I'm here to support the board member Ms. Deepak Karthik. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but it was extremely excruciating to see the kind of viciousness that she was subjected to. And what truly surprises me is, I'm not going to talk about the First Amendment rights and all this stuff, which other people have done much better job of than me, that you being the board members, you have worked with her for four years, and she, before becoming a board member, she has worked in the community against the compressor station, she fought violently against it, and we won, she has been a board member on her HOA, so she has a history of volunteering in the community. That you did not think fit that a bloodthirsty mob, which are out paying for our blood, none of you had the decency to take a minute and say, this disrespect is not going to be tolerated. You guys should go and look at that video. I guarantee you, you'll not be able to watch more than fifteen minutes of that, you know, video which causes, which actually caused me immense amount of strain that I couldn't actually watch it and all. I couldn't believe this was happening in the United States of America. And, and what, another thing which surprises me is, you guys have worked there for four years, not one of you could come up and say, hey, we have seen no evidence of bias. What it tells me is, this is a board lacking spine and guts. I've got to say it. There is no other way to put it, absolutely spineless board, and, you know, that's going to be revealed. And you must have seen the difference in the discourse today and last week. Can you see a difference? You're putting up points in a civil fashion, you're not going, swearing, calling you guys' words. Okay, other thing, what surprises me is, you know, there are tons of laws in this country, and I'm pretty sure you guys have, you know, tons of school laws, and you pulled out an obscure law, I've written it down, what is it? 0169 dot 02, wonderful, because as laws go, I could be put in jail for doing this because there are tons of laws. My question to you is the following, did you apply the same law when another board member, by the name of Lisa Rogers, had the following to say on social media? Right? She called Republicans Nazi Party. I've got screenshots here. Okay, the Republicans are disgusting. Wait, wait, hold on a second, why did you not apply these laws then? Oh, okay, okay. And this is not the Republican Party we grew up with, this is the start of the next Nazi Party. That's what, right? And the third one, these people will burn in hell as they deny the path of our law. They do not want peace, they just want a pure white nation. Okay, is that not, does not, that not qualify under the obscure law that you pulled out? Your fairness, your so-called fairness and adherence to the law is going to be measured by, if you ask her to sit a step down for the committee as well. But what you have proven is, you have given, you have given into a bloodthirsty mob, it doesn't stop here, it's a very slippery slope, which is going to consume you all. Thank you so much.
Hi, good evening, my name is Ajay Shah, I'm a community activist. I would like to request that all the board members put out all the social media posts that they have made, for example, their views on Second Amendment, their views on diversity and inclusion, the DEI policy, their views on transgenders in sports, their views on immigration, illegal immigration, and whether they have rights to be in the school or not. I want to see all the board members, all the social media posts to be put out in the public so that this group can decide whether you are worthy of the policy that you, you just quoted. We want to judge you by the same policy that you are trying to judge Mrs. Karthik. This is bullying, plain and simple, of a Hindu woman. And you are just cowardly hiding behind a policy. You, you are sacrificing a fellow committee member because you are up for reelection, and you think that we all want to appease people and win elections. If you did not have election coming up next year, you would not be doing this today. Okay? So as a member of this committee, I will assure you that if you do not withdraw what you, your decision, we will make sure that you do not win the next election. Because, not because of, not because of just Mrs. Karthik, but also because if you are exactly the wrong person to teach our kids how to stand up for freedom, freedom of speech, how to stand up for what is right, and how to stand up for, how to stand up to bullying, because you are showing the kids today that succumbing to bullying is the way to go. So this is on you, Madam President, thank you.
Right, my name is Vijay Joshi, I'm a resident of South Brunswick and one of the taxpayers of the South Brunswick. So respected committee, the community and the board members, so before I start, I'm going to read the so-called policy, you know, that you guys have been so hung up on. In accordance with school ethics, board of education member must avoid conduct which is in violation of public trust or which creates a justifiable impression among the public that such trust is being violated. To avoid conduct that may be in violation or perceived to be in violation of the School Ethic Act, the Board of Education adopts this policy to provide guidance to the board members in their use of social network. And then there are many paragraphs. So here, it clearly says, in violation of public trust. So which public trust are we talking here? So which public? Right. So my question to this board is, did you guys take any public vote? And if you had taken, where is that vote? And we want, we would like to see the public vote. If you have taken, right? So, yeah, so we would like to see the public vote that you have done, and as many of my, you know, friends or committee members, they spoke, if you have not done that, you are cowardly succumbing to some pressure tactics that some, you know, some people have applied on you, and you are doing a great injustice to Ms. Karthik, you know, and setting a very wrong example in front of the community and especially being a school board. If our kids are watching, I'm really ashamed to see if my middle school kid is watching that how to succumb to, you know, how to get bullied. You guys are setting a very good example. So as a taxpayer and as a voter of this community, I want to know if, how the board is going to reverse this decision, and I assure you, on behalf of the entire community, if you guys are not going to reverse the decision, we'll make every single effort and the arm, you know, the ammunition we have in our, you know, the vote that we have, we will promise, I'm promising here, that we will make sure every single guy sitting here as an elected board member gets replaced in your next due course of election. So please make sure you are doing the right thing, just don't misinterpret the policy and give us these kind of stories that we are, you know, trying to follow the policy. Thank you.
Just before you start, Om, just raise your hand. That's our last speaker, would be Om, okay? That'll be, that's giving an extra fifteen minutes, that's still giving an extra fifteen minutes.
Thank you, respected board members. First of all, thank you for your, for your patience to grind through another long evening. You know, I'm here to express my deep concern over what has transpired over the last couple of weeks. I would like to put things in perspective and in a chronological order. Ms. Deepak Karthik made a post on her social media page, and someone, someone took that and overlaid their selective personal interpretation and reposted it in a community board, instigating unnecessary discord within the community. I, I will not speculate on their intent, but it does initiate an extremely dangerous precedent, where anything on one's personal social media pages can be reinterpreted and posted on community boards and potentially taken out of context. Today, it is an elected board member, tomorrow, it could be a parent who's volunteering in the school, the day after tomorrow, it could be a student, a student targeted who's running a club in the school. This can get endless. At a minimum, everyone in this community needs to disapprove of such irresponsible behavior by this person. Mrs. Karthik has done her part to clarify her intent and position on the original post, and has done everything in her capacity to clear any misunderstanding. The thing that I didn't even know about is her track record, the decisions she has taken on, you know, whether it's Christmas holiday or even halal food. I mean, at a minimum, you know, take a step back, you know, if, if, if the board was going to make a decision, it would have been ideally nice to at least hear the other side as to what they are thinking about before making a decision and conveying that. And, 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 you know, honestly, nothing's too late. It's not too late. John Maynard Keynes said, you know, when facts change, I change my mind. And Winston Churchill said the same thing. I really, really would like to kindly request the board and strongly urge the board to support and protect Mrs. Karthik from unwarranted harassment.
Fifteen seconds.
And give her a fair and sensible closure to this matter and reconsider their decision. Thank you so much.
Respected board members, I'm here as a common citizen. I'm here today not only to support Mr. Deepak Karthik, but also to stand for everyone's right to express their opinion freely. What Mrs. Karthik said was her personal opinion, and in a free society, we must allow space for such expressions, even when we may not agree with them. As an immigrant to this great country, I came here drawn by the values of liberty and freedom. America is strong and unique because of its unwavering commitment to these principles, especially the freedom of speech. If I am, if I am to live in this country and truly embrace, embrace its values, I must also respect the rights of others to speak their minds. Freedom of speech must be protected for everyone, not just those who agree with. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Madam President, Madam Vice President, Mr. Supranant, and fellow board members. Hi, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here without any unprepared, without any prepared speech. I'm just here to tell you that please do not give space, room for cancel culture to prevail. Do not allow, please do not allow divisive forces, communal forces, to spread their wings here. I come from a country which has been divided badly by divisive forces in the past. I know how much it costs us. So my humble request to all the board members and the president and everybody else here, do not allow this to happen, and the kind of intimidation that we saw last time was horrific. I'm not here to endorse anybody or speak against anybody, but I, it's only a humble request that you should do what you have been elected to do. Thank you very much.
I'm a proud Hindu-American citizen, Thirumallesh Kaudle. Ms. Karthik, I am ashamed that they forced you to apologize for no fault of what you did. It's a shame. So I want to challenge this policy. We cannot put Bhindi, we cannot celebrate Diwali, we cannot celebrate Christmas, they intimidate us, they bully us, they want to have their way of life. In Sanatana Dharma, which is also known as Hinduism, we allow everybody to live the way they want. we allow everybody to live the way they want and universal peace is what we look. Here, we have been bullied. You people make no mistake. Europe has been destroyed by these radicals. America will get destroyed. I live in South Brunswick for twenty-five years. I know how Hindu temples across the country coast-to-coast coordinated attack. This is an organized crime. I am not telling Islam is bad. The few radicals, they have the money, they have the ability to bully, they have the ability to buy votes. They will come after anybody other than their own thing. This is a religion, they don't even respect their own daughters and mothers. I am ashamed that Ms. Karthik has been forced to this and I'm ashamed of this board. Can you imagine? Oh, her daughter, her husband, her family, how dare they write to her employer? You should be ashamed. You people should have supported and stood and protected her. You three were under the bus, shame on all of you. I am so happy federal is leaving us. Yeah, you board members, if you think that you... Okay, if you think that you are supporting those radicals because you are getting the vote power, they will eat up everybody. And you people told that you settled with community leaders. Who are those community leaders? Were we there in that Sanatana Dharma people? Or were these radical destroys of this freedom and the country who have held all of us as hostage? They are threatening us. I have seen the fabric of this great country and our township been eaten away little by little by little.
Yeah, fifteen seconds.
So, I am not going to respect you people. Withdraw back the punishment she has given. You people should publicly apologize her and all the Hindus.
Hello, good evening. My name is Umesh Mahajan. I am resident of South Brunswick Township for last twenty years and represent various organizations and have worked with most of you. So, I'd like to just say a few things. First of all, my understanding is education board has a huge agenda in front of you, including the budget cut and so on, so many other things. And I feel sad where our precious time is being devoted on such trivial issues and discussing and being jury on these issues which has nothing to do with our education policy, which has nothing to do with agenda or charter we have. And we are spending countless hours, not only our hours plus public hours on issues because the agenda is being pushed by certain people, certain organizations or whatever. I feel sad that's happening. I mean, I feel like I've been paying taxes for twenty years, right? My kids have grown up, they are going to college. I still, I'm, I am, I love my township. But when I see my township tax dollars are going down the drain to discuss these things, I feel sad in my heart. What's going on in our township? Is this the path that we want to take? Other things I, other thing, a lot of people have already covered number of things. I'm not going to repeat that. Few questions I had, you mentioned few things that the decision that you took. First of all, I do not agree with the decision. The policy that you say that, I completely do not agree. How, how did you decide that this one violates someone's rights or particular feeling or whatever? Is the entire spectrum of public considered or only certain few people were considered? Second thing, I heard that you mentioned several community leaders were discussed. My request, no, my request to board is, please disclose. As a full disclosure, please provide the names and credentials of community leaders. And I would like to know if it is a specific community which was consulted for this important decision or across all different communities were decision. That's a very important part of the decision. I am assuming she mentioned that as part of the decision. So I'm assuming this is a very important part of the discussion. You have held several discussions with community leaders. So I would like, as a full disclosure from the board, I demand, please provide a list of community leaders so that we understand what is going on behind the meeting, behind the closed-door meeting. Exactly, these are some of the things. And I, I would, I would, yeah, I would request, my humble request to the board is, please reconsider and I would like to specifically see what law she actually violated and how you perceive that is being violated.
Yeah, fifteen seconds.
And the last thing is, I agree with some of the members. It's not against a person, it's not against someone. Today it is Deepa, tomorrow it could be somebody else, third could be somebody else. And again, we succumb to the pressure by bullies tomorrow.
Thank you.
The whole thing may be there, so I... South Brunswick Township, yay!
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rajan and I'm a proud citizen of state of New Jersey. So I want to take a moment to clarify Ms. Deepa Karthik's recent comment shared via her personal social media account regarding halal food. As a community, our perspective on food practices, religious or otherwise, is guided by our ethical beliefs around animal welfare and personal dietary choices. I don't think Ms. Karthik's intention was to target or disrespect any religious community. Rather, she expressed a personal opinion rooted in cleanliness, ethical and dietary convictions that are protected under the First Amendment of the United States of America. The Constitution ensures freedom of speech, including the right to express dissenting or unpopular views as long as they don't, they do not incite violence or promote hate. And we don't see any hate was incited in this case. In the United States, freedom of religion also includes the right not to practice or endorse any religion, religious customs. Just as every community has the right to preserve and celebrate its values, individuals also have the right to question or critique practices from their own moral or philosophical lens peacefully and respectfully. Let me be clear, as a Hindu community, we do not support hate, discrimination or intolerance of any kind. We respect the right of all individuals to follow their dietary and religious customs. Ms. Karthik's comment was never intended to provoke hostility, but rather to express a personal belief about food ethics as she have held consistently. In a democracy, open dialogue even when uncomfortable is essential. We welcome thoughtful discussions and reject any attempt to politicize or misrepresent Ms. Karthik's word as a form of hate. Let me conclude by saying, free speech is not just for speech you agree with. And the speech is free even when it hurts. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being patient, listening to all of us here today. But again, I'm here to express my support for Deepa here. I'm really concerned with the decision that was made. You know, I, I feel like she's being treated truly unfairly. She's been a dedicated and respected member of our board for the last four years, which obviously I didn't know. Time flew by, Deepa, unbelievably. Based on her personal social media post, shared in her own capacity outside her professional note, she should not be treated this way. She's truly being vilified and vindicated at this point. I just want to restate the post. I'm sure everybody read it, but for the people that did not, I truly did not because I was out of the country. So I just read it like earlier today. It says, "As a Hindu woman, I don't support halal products. Halal is a specific method of slaughter and contamination. There is no reason for tea, coffee, rice, wheat, spices, vegetable, milk, sweets etc. to be certified as halal." This in my opinion is not Islamophobia. It is a personal... It is a personal dietary belief shaped by her religious and cultural background. I am a vegetarian, my whole family is not. So you can clearly understand that we are not against vegetarian, non-vegetarian perspective, but it's her belief, right? She should be allowed to state her belief. She did not attack in that post that I just read, individuals or communities. She expressed concern over labeling products, which is clear, right? Like I myself have read it sometimes in the stores, like halal. I'm like, I, it made me wonder, why is this label halal? It's just a simple question that a normal citizen could ask. I think it's particularly the religious certification of non-meat items, which is valid viewpoint under freedom of speech and freedom of religion as protected by her First Amendment. Unfortunately, this personal opinion has been taken out of context and politicized. And I agree with a lot of people here. I love the frog and the Chinese analogy. Even more troubling is that we are giving into it. The controversy has been brought into our school with students reportedly distributing flyers on the matter, despite it having no connection to educational policy or student instruction. This should not be allowed in school. I don't even know why the school allowed that. That should be brought up. Schools, schools should never become platforms for such divisive targeted campaigns. I don't know how those students were allowed to do that. They are meant to foster learning inclusiveness and respect for dialogue, not pressure or silence individuals for personal beliefs expressed outside their public roles. How were students allowed to go to students, here, please sign this, please sign this? Some of these kids were not even reading what they were signing. It's ridiculous. Some may point to your, to what I just heard today, the policy 016902, which guides board members' social media use and reference the Social Ethics Act.
Yeah, fifteen seconds.
Yep. However, in Deepa's post, did not mention the district its students, was shared on a personal post, did not disclose any confidential information, reflected only dietary and cultural beliefs. Under a strict reading, it does not violate the spirit of the letter of the policy. Any suggestion otherwise is based on subjective interpretation. Deepa has served for four years unwavering integrity. She deserves gratitude, not vilification for her years of thoughtful and unbiased service. Let's return to the focus.
Hello, everyone. My name is Omar Oscar and I am the co-president of the South Brunswick High School Muslim Student Association. I stand before you today outraged that the same vice president, who honored and recognized my academic achievement as a national merit commended student just two months ago, now directs hateful comments at the very faith that shapes YM. I never had any...
Oh no, he gets to voice his opinion just like you did.
I have never had any issues with administration, administration regarding my faith prior to this incident, whether coordinating a prayer room or organizing...
Hold on, stop for a second, stop, one second.
Thank you.
Enough. You, enough. Let him finish, let the person talk. No, just let him talk, that's it. That's all you have to do, is do nothing, simple.
I have never had any issues with administration regarding my faith prior to this incident, whether coordinating a prayer room or organizing our MSA Aftar event. Speaking of the Aftar, Ms. Karthik stated that halal food is, I quote, contaminated. Whether she meant to or not, she stated that in her post. The MSA holds an annual Aftar event that serves over three hundred students, a hundred to a hundred fifty of whom are non-Muslim. I ask you, Ms. Karthik, how do you think those students and their families would react to your misinformed hate speech? Today, I along with members of the Executive Board of the Muslim Student Association went around asking students their opinion on the matter and if they were willing to sign the petition. The petition reads, "Dear Ms. Hernandez, we, the undersigned students at South Brunswick High School, write with deep concern regarding recent public statements made by Deepa Karthik of the Board of Education. Her public statements mock survival of violence, disparage a Nobel Peace Prize laureate and express intolerance toward Muslim and Islam and Muslim students. Ms. Karthik's rhetoric is inappropriate for an elected official entrusted with guiding the educational policies of one of New Jersey's most diverse school districts. Rather than fostering a climate of mutual respect and inclusion, Ms. Karthik's comments erode trust, marginalize our voices and deepen the divide between students. We, the undersigned students at South Brunswick High School in solidarity with SBHS Muslim Student Association, demand that this matter be referred to the New Jersey School Ethics Commission for independent review, Ms. Karthik be removed from her position as vice president of the Board of Education and that she issue a formal public written apology to the students of South Brunswick High School to be published online. To rebuild the community's trust and to uphold the integrity of the district's leadership, immediate and decisive action is imperative."
Yeah, fifteen seconds.
We also extend an invitation to Ms. Karthik to engage in meaningful dialogue with Imam Hamad Shibli of the Islamic Society of Central Jersey and its resident scholars, Ismail Bowers, to discuss the tenets of our faith. We invite Ms. Karthik to attend next year's SBHS Aftar, which offers inclusive vegetarian options. I end off with asking Ms. Karthik, where is your apology to the students? Where is your apology to the students who you were elected to...
Time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next, the next speaker.
Okay, we can only have people speak from the podium.
Okay, hello, my name is Om Bhaskar. I'm a sophomore at South Brunswick High School and...
Going to start you over, Om?
Yeah, so I'm a sophomore at South Brunswick High School and I'm a pretty frequent attendee of these meetings. Now, I'm irreligious. I, I was born to a Hindu family. However, I'm not, I personally do not follow Hinduism as many other people do. I'm not Muslim either, I'm not religious, so I just want to get that out of the way. One thing I will say is that because of that, I don't really have many strong feelings on this matter. I think, you know, it is good that we had an apology. I think it is important that we lower tensions in our community in any way, in any way possible. However, I do also think that, you know, there are certain things that both sides are saying that, you know, their concerns are important. And that's why we live in such a brilliant country where we are allowed to talk about these issues. But I do want to push back against some of the rhetoric that has been stated so far. For example, calling shame on our board. Now, many of you may not know this, but last year we had a significant budget crisis and this was the board that got us through that. Calling for them to be removed and unelected over what is essentially Facebook comments is, in my opinion, ridiculous. This, like, we were in serious trouble and they advocated for us and that's a real important thing they did. And I also just want to point out the fact that during those like horrific times, we had nowhere near this amount of attendance. So I would, I really would implore not only people who came last meeting, but this meeting, come to more of these meetings, you know, they're really important. I would also just like, like to talk about the fact that, you know, we have had accusations that the, many of the Muslim students that came last meeting were not civil. I agree, some of them weren't civil. However, to say that in this meeting, people have been civil is also completely incorrect. Many of you have called, like, just constantly been interrupting. Many of you have called for shame, many of you have called for complete resignation of the board. This is not what civil debate looks like. Civil debate is...
Why, why, why would you do this? Why would you interrupt his opportunity to speak his mind? You weren't interrupted, no one was interrupted. Why would you do that? Think about that, why would you do that? Om, continue please.
So, yeah, this is, this is not what civil debate looks like. We should focus on reducing tensions and we should focus on understanding that despite all of our religious differences, we are all Americans. We all live in the greatest country on the planet and therefore we should not see each other as enemies but as brothers and sisters. Now, I'll be completely honest, after hearing all of this, I definitely did feel a bit enraged and it's not just at this sect of people. I'm saying at both, on both sides, there are significant issues. But as long as we work together, we understand and respect each other's religions and beliefs and we are able to interpret things like the Constitution in a more fair light. You know, freedom of speech is not freedom from consequence. I think we can actually come to solution here. And that's really all I have to say, but I would just like to end this off by really imploring everybody here, please come to more of these. You know, we hadn't, like, before the entire controversy...
Fifteen seconds.
Before the entire controversy at last meeting, there was an entire like, like talk about redistricting and a map was shown and all of this kind of stuff. We should focus on this. We live in a community together, we should learn to live together. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Laura, Laura, that was your last comment?
Okay, yeah, that was our, that was our last comment of the night we've gone on... We've gone over a significant amount of time. So we are gonna end this portion of the board meeting at this time. And with that being said, I just need a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting. Julie, and then I need a second. Lisa. All in favor? Okay, please note the next scheduled Board of Education meeting is set for Thursday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven o'clock.